Evening, everyone. I want to thank you all for coming out to the Route 28 Innovative Intersection Design Public Hearing tonight. I want to thank the City of Manassas Park for letting us use their facilities tonight. Before we get started, I just want to let everybody know, we are here to talk about the Phase One Route 28 Innovative Intersections. That's the design from Manassas Drive to Spruce Street. We are not here to talk about the canceled Route 28 bypass. We're not here to talk about the Phase Two Innovative Design, which would be from Spruce Street towards Fairfax County, or any other improvements on 28. So it's really just about the innovative intersections from Manassas Drive to Spruce Street. At this time, I'd like to thank all the elected officials that came out here tonight and take time out of their busy schedule to get here. We have from the Prince William County Supervisor Bodie. Oh, he's still outside? Okay. From the City of Manassas Park, we have Mayor Mincing, Councilmember Sovereling, Councilmember Amaya, and then we have a special guest, Senator Danica Rome. Senator, would you like to say a few things? Oh, Mayor, do you want to say something?
All right. Thank you, everyone, for coming out. It's really good to see so many people who are interested in keeping themselves informed about the status of Route 28. I want to say thank you to VDOT for having this presentation here. It's great to bring it to our city. Thank you to all of our city staff, Steve Hall, and thank you to Senator Rome for advocating for our commutes. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Very nice to call you Madam Mayor, by the way. So greetings, everyone. Really, really, really glad to see everyone come out. We even had a few more people than the third public hearing that we had, which was here last time last year. So my name is Danica Rome. I represent City Mass Park, City of Manassas, and Western Prince William County. You're here because this project is my baby. So here's the, I'm going to give you the very short history of how we got to where we are, and then if you like what you see, I'm happy to take your kudos. If you don't like what you see, I will endure your blame. One way or the other, the buck has to stop somewhere and throw it at me. That's just fine. So here's the backstory to what happened here. Number one, I ran for office in 2017 on a platform of fixing Route 28. You voted for me to do that. So we got down to work of doing that. Number two, Rick Kanzos from Prince William County Department of Transportation waving in the back. Him and I had a meeting not even three weeks after that election, where we sat down and we started talking about this as one of several options, along with Dick Burke was there from VDOT. I saw Dick earlier. There he is. And Dick's actually the one who even mentioned, because I was talking at the time about overpasses and stuff, and he said, "Well, hey, you know, there's a thing called innovative intersection designs. You should probably look into this." So we did. And in 2018, I then filed HJ 68, and that called for VDOT to study innovative intersection designs in this corridor. Well, that died, and so I brought it back the next year as terms of, as a bill, HB 2466. And even though they killed the bill, because I was still in the minority party and they were not going to give me a win by freshman year, we got the then-VDOT Secretary, Shannon Valentine, to agree to administratively implement it. And so that got us off to the start. So then, that November 2019, we had two public hearings. One on my 35th birthday over at Manassas Park Community Center, attended by a number of the folks who are here. And then we had a second one that November after that election over at Cougar Elementary School, also here in Manassas Park. At those events, we asked you, the public, for the residents, the commuters, and the workers, everyone here, what do you want to see a redesigned Route 28 look like? We then presented you with a whole buffet of items, and we said, "You tell us what you want." Well, we received 1,334 survey responses to that, and VDOT quite literally took your responses and said, "Let's go figure it out." And so what we have here are a series of innovative intersection designs. The two that matter for this corridor, number one, that you'll be hearing about between Maplewood and Browns Lane, those are called restricted crossing U-turns, otherwise known as R-cuts. And we will explain the details of how all of that works as well. The other one that you'll hear about is called a median U-turn, AKA mutt. That one is between Birch Street and Spruce Street. Oh, Darryl can sit in that seat anytime. That's no problem. Manassas Park Councilmember Darryl Moore, good to see you as well. Vice Mayor, I should say. Vice Mayor. That's right. That's right. So also, a former council member, Donald Shoemaker, who's in the back as well. And we even have Prince William County Planning Commissioner-at-Large, Mark Scheifler, who's here from right down the street off of Roseberry. So, cool. Okay, anyway, so continuing with that. So, May 2020 comes around. VDOT publishes the report. At this point, we said, "Okay, we've got the report. Let's go get our money." And so we immediately put in a funding request to smart scale and lost. So what came back is they said, "Too expensive. Do it again." And we had a problem, and I know Rick and I were both talking a lot at this point. Prince William County had caused escalation issues. We were having this. Their projects in Prince William were being told, "But hey, we put in for this. You told us it was going to be this, and then upon review from CTV, it's now coming off as much more expensive." We ran into the exact same problem with this one. We were both, like, talking about how frustrated we were at the time. But that's why we have RESOLVE, and that's why we have partners. And the nice thing about Manassas Park's government here, that I have to give you all so much credit for, is you said, "Hey, we're willing to take the lead on submitting this application," and the Prince William Department of Transportation was able to work directly with Manassas Park here and provide a light of guidance, because, I mean, simply put, Prince William County has an entire Department of Transportation that's much larger than anything the city could have. And so the county and the city worked directly together. We made sure that we kept Manassas City in the loop as well. And what we ended up doing was we took this project and we narrowed it down into different phases. By bringing it into phases instead of one thing at a time, what we were able to do is make the project more competitive by basically asking for funding requests for smaller things. So then the money started coming in. So, or at least the commitments for money started coming in. First one came in in 2022. That's when we got $330,000 of RSTP funds, Regional Surface Transportation Program funding. Number two is the following year after, in June of 2022, I took to the House floor during VDOT session, or Special Session, and berated my colleagues and the administration, anyone else who's willing to listen to me, for saying that we had a transportation surplus when we had a project like this that was ready to go and was not funded. Same thing over at Rollins Ford Road, where we had, you know, someone who got, you know, severely hurt, you know, for a project that we had ready to get, blah, blah, blah. So after, it turns out, if you're really loud, obnoxious, and this is important, persistent, they will give you money. And so that's what the lesson that I learned. And then that January, we got money. Specifically, for this project from the Virginia Highway Safety Improvement Program, we secured $24.5 million. That was a huge win for us right there. And then that, because we had that project and RSTP, then that set us up this past year with the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority, and we secured $40 million. So at this point, the whole project is now fully funded. You will see the timeline later tonight. We have secured $62.5 million for this innovative intersection design path. It is designed to do three things. It is going to make your commute priority number one, safer. This is a throughput and operational safety thing. It does not deal with capacity. This is an operational safety thing. So we are going to be able to prevent about 40 to 50 crashes per year along this whole corridor. Number two, this is going to make your commute a little quicker, about five to 10 minutes, depending on time of day, because you're going to be sitting at red lights for a less amount of time. You will see that in the presentation as we go forward here. And number three, it's going to make it a little bit greener, because you're not going to be idling at the traffic lights for quite as much time. Now, this is going to still take time. We are, you're going to see when the timeline comes up in a little bit, all the sort of things that you still have to get through. We think we can probably start dealing with the utility relocation stuff, all of that in about 2026, and then, or to 2027, you'll see it. And then somewhere between 2027 and early 2028, that's when you can see actual construction beginning, and then that's going to take well into the next year after that. So the ball is rolling. We're doing the thing, and I'm happy to take questions once the presentation is over tonight. So with that, I have to turn it back over to Eric.
Thank you, Senator Rome. And just so you know, the, because of her, we can actually, what she was talking about was the full 28 corridor. What you'll see tonight, you'll see a slide later tonight, when she says $62 million, we're going to go up here and present something like $27.6 million. So you're going to see a discrepancy. That, the other 40-plus million is for the rest of it. That is what we called, I mentioned earlier, is Phase Two. So that is the future phase along 28. At this time, we'll go ahead and start our presentation. I'll go ahead and give you a quick agenda tonight. We're going to start off with, as you can see, with the project team introductions. We'll do, then I'll hand it off to our consultant, and they'll talk about the project area, the background, the planned improvements, the environmental process, the right-of-way, preliminary cost, the schedule, Danica mentioned, and then we'll open it up for questions. So at this time, I'd like to introduce the team members over here. We have Terry Yates. He is the VDOT NOVA District Project Development Engineer. My name is Eric Spencer again. I'm the Prince William County VDOT Plenary Engineering Manager. We have Jenny Ha. She is the Project Manager for Location Design overseeing this project for us. We have Kevin Reichardt. He's our, one of our VDOT consultants. Randy Boyce, he's another one of our consultants. We have Stephen Hall. He's the City of Manassas Park Transportation Manager. And along with these people I've mentioned here, there's a lot of other VDOT folks that you will see around here. We have other departments here, too. So after the presentation, questions, if you have any specific questions, questions for anything specific, you can go see them. We have our Civil Rights Group here. We have somebody from our right-of-way groups here. We have our environmental folks. We have people from our bike and ped. And then we even have some people specifically here that will lead the design build. This is a preliminary design, which will move into a design build, so they can answer specific questions about design build. Next slide. And at this time, I'm going to hand it over to Kevin, and he will lead you through the rest of the presentation.
Great. Thanks, Eric. I will point out that this PowerPoint presentation, if it's not on VDOT's website, it will be posted following the meeting. So I know some people were taking pictures, but it will be available for y'all to look at. So just to give a little bit of background on the project area, as Eric mentioned and the Senator mentioned as well, the project that we're presenting tonight is on Route 28 between Manassas Drive and Spruce Street. The roadway is classified as urban other principal arterial, and it has approximately 50,000 to 53,000 vehicles per day. And then the peak hour, which alternates between the northbound and southbound direction, is approximately 2,000 vehicles per hour. Existing roadway configuration is media, it's undivided roadway, five lanes with a center two-way left-turn lane. And as I'm sure all of you are aware, it's a heavily developed corridor, so there are numerous driveways and commercial entrances within the project limits. A little bit more on the background, and I know the Senator spoke to this earlier, but this really started, as far as the study, in 2019 and 2020, and VDOT conducted what's called a Strategically Targeted and Affordable Roadway Solutions Program Study, a STAR Study for short. And as part of that, they looked at the crash data for the corridor. They analyzed traffic times. They collected public input. So this is, they had extensive public involvement at that time and solicited the public's input on what they wanted to see on the corridor. And then based on that, they developed some conceptual planning and design alternatives, and then selected ultimately the alternative that we are presenting here this evening. This is a slide with the display. It's the same display that's around the room this evening. This is an overview of the project limits. You know, just want to stress again that this really is a safety improvement project, and one of the ways that it really improves safety is by introducing the raised median. It reduces conflict points within the corridor, and it's also a pedestrian safety improvement project. So we are filling in some of the missing segments of sidewalk along, primarily along the southbound side of Route 28, but also filling in some of the missing segments along the northbound side of Route 28, and then providing pedestrian crossings. So at the signalized intersections at Browns Lane and Maplewood Drive, we are providing pedestrian signals and high-visibility crosswalks. To walk through some of the details of the improvements, the two signalized, existing full signalized intersections are being changed to R-cut signalized intersections at Browns Lane and Maplewood Drive. New median U-turn on Route 28 between Birch Street and Spruce Street. So that's for the northbound to southbound U-turn movement. We're extending the southbound left-turn lane, U-turn lane at Blooms Quarry Lane. Again, as I mentioned before, new median throughout the project area, five-foot sidewalks, filling in some of the missing segments. I will point out that there are numerous areas where the existing sidewalk is currently four feet wide. Some of the shorter segments, we are replacing with a five-foot sidewalk. There is a longer section along southbound 28 adjacent to the shopping center that will remain a four-foot sidewalk, primarily because if we were to replace it with five feet, it would lead to more property impacts as well as to impacts to the landscaping. But we are adding passing areas along that four-foot section of sidewalk. And then we are replacing majority of the existing ADA ramps within the project limits. So the majority of them are not compliant with current regulations, and we are replacing those. There are a few locations where it's not feasible to replace them, because it would lead to significant impacts to some of the commercial entrances. So those are not being replaced, but where we can, we're replacing them. And then associated with the roadway improvements, there are drainage and stormwater management improvements as well. Again, to really stress, you know, some of the benefits of the proposed improvements, as we mentioned numerous times, the safety improvements, reducing the conflict points, which it really increases the safety. And then we're also improving the efficiency of the corridor. So while it's not a capacity improvement project, we are able to dedicate more green time to the through movements on Route 28 with the innovative R-cut intersections. So that will ultimately lead to shorter wait times at the signalized intersections. We do have displays, both in English and Spanish, for the R-cut movement. So this is not a project rendering, but this is a display that shows how a signalized R-cut intersection will function. A couple of things that I want to point out associated with this is that if you're approaching Route 28 from the side streets, and you wanted to make either a through movement or a left-turning movement, you will now be required to make a right turn, travel down Route 28 to a designated location to make a U-turn, and then come back to the intersection to complete either your through movement or your left-turning movement. The other thing I do want to point out here is that, you know, I've talked a little bit about reducing conflict points. So a full signalized intersection has 32 conflict points. The R-cut signalized intersection will reduce that down to 14. So really, a significant improvement and a big safety improvement for these signalized intersections. And the last thing I'll point out here is the pedestrian accommodations at the intersections. So again, you can see that we will have high-visibility crosswalks, and then in the middle of the intersection, it's a pedestrian refuge island for the pedestrians crossing at the And then this is a blow-up of the Browns Lane signalized intersection. So again, converting the full signalized intersection to a R-cut signalized intersection. What you see on the display there, so on either side of Route 28, the orange area, that's the sidewalk section that's being filled in, and then you can see the high-visibility crosswalks. And in the middle, where the orange kind of goes through, the cyan area, that's the pedestrian refuge island. And then, you know, PED signals at the intersection. This typical section on Route 28 in the vicinity of Browns Lane, we'll point out that in general, we are holding the existing outside curb lane, I mean, curb and gutter to minimize property impacts as well as to fit the improvements within the budget. So with that, some of the through lanes will be reduced from 12-foot to 11-foot through lanes. And then we have a 12-foot left-turn lane. In general, the concrete median is four feet wide, but in some areas, it is reduced down to three feet wide just because of the constraints of the corridor. And then you can see the sidewalk on either side of Route 28. We have a variable width buffer strip between the sidewalk and the back of curb. So we've tried to hold a four-foot buffer strip, but in some areas, it is reduced or even eliminated, and the sidewalk is up against the back of the curb and gutter. And that's primarily to minimize property impacts as well as to minimize utility relocations. So you will see on the displays that the sidewalk does meander in some areas just to avoid some of those conflicts. And then this is a display for Maplewood Drive, so very similar to Browns Lane, again with the R-cut signalized intersection, new medians, ADA ramps on all four quadrants of the intersection, high-visibility crosswalks, and PED signals. And then typical section on Route 28 at Maplewood Drive, so almost identical to what we have at Browns Lane, with the two through lanes in each direction, 12-foot left-turn lane, raised median, and sidewalk on each side of Route 28. And this is between Birch Street and Spruce Street is where we have the signalized U-turn. So we, the bump out that you see on the top side of Route 28 or along the southbound side of Route 28 is what's called a loon, and that's to accommodate the U-turning movements at this signalized location. So it is designed to accommodate a large truck making a U-turn. And again, it will be signalized at this location. And then we do have sidewalk along the southbound side of Route 28, extending up to Spruce Street and tying into the existing ADA ramps at the Spruce Street intersection. And then this is the typical section at the northern end of the project. So in this area, we have a wider concrete median, so approximately 14-foot wide concrete median, two through lanes in each direction, and just sidewalk along the southbound side of Route 28. And then once we get past this point, typical section will transition back to the existing section, where it is an undivided five-lane section with a two-way left-turn lane. Okay? With that, I'll turn it over to Jenny.
Thank you, Kevin. So over that project, we'll need to do an environmental review process for federal-funded projects. This is called the NEPA process. NEPA stands for National Environmental Policy Act of 1969. You can see here, NEPA is considered an umbrella which covers multiple tasks. For example, for National Historical Preservation Act for wetland, for Clean Water Act for wildlife, and many more. So each federal-funded project will need to go through NEPA process, and this document need to compliance or no impact to these policies. The level of environmental document based on NEPA significance of impacts, since this project has very limited impacts, so the project belongs to qualified for programmatic categorical exclusion. Also, this PC has been processed and issued by this project. So we have identified this project need to purchase land from agent property owners. This is for us called right-of-way acquisitions. You can read up to the brochure, which referenced here, that is called a guide for property owners and tenants. And also today, there are some hard copies available for you to pick up and reference. So the project will require 29 proposed partial acquisitions. These impacts are subject to change as the final design is developed. Utility easement are not show at this time. Each property acquisition is unique and is discussed on a case-by-case basis after right-of-way notice to proceed. So this slide listed preliminary cost estimate. So the total project estimate is worth $27.7 million, including $1.9 million for preliminary engineering, $7.7 million for right-of-way and utility relocation, and $18.1 million for construction. Also, the project is allocated with the Heavy Safety Funding Program for this project, and allocated funding is worth $27.7 million. So please note, you know, like, estimate are subject to change as the project design progresses. The current design under public hearing stage is under review. So this slide shows our project anticipated schedule. We had a public information meeting in May last year. Tonight, we have public hearing meeting. Public hearing common deadline will end on March 10, 2025. The project acquisition, right-of-way acquisition and utility relocation and construction will be delivered through a design build contract. We believe this way can speed the project quickly and make a project move over efficiently. So the award for design build contract is expected in spring 2026. After that, you know, the project will undergo final design phase. Right-of-way acquisition under design build is expected in fall 2026, and utility relocation in fall 2027. We expect to begin construction under design build in spring 2028, and with an anticipated construction duration based 12 months. So again, this schedule listed here are subject to change as we move the project and develop project moving forward. So I will turn it over to Eric.
All right. Now, we're almost done with the presentation. We're going to get to the question and answer time that we're going to provide here tonight. I did forget to mention that although we are here to specifically talk about the Route 28, VDOT team here between Spruce Streets and Manassas Drive, representatives of the county did show up tonight, because they knew that there may be some questions about other things going on. So once we're done with the question and answers time, feel free to reach out. You know, Senator Rome introduced Rick earlier. He's the Director of Transportation for Prince William County. Rami and Richard are here. They're also work for Rick over at Prince William County, so they can do their best to try to answer any of the questions, I know, y'all, about the other aspects going on 28. So for this project itself, though, there is basically going to be four ways that you can reach, give us comments. You can ask tonight, if you feel free, coming up and asking the question. And in the brochures, oh, there's five ways, I'm getting pointed out. In the brochures, there's actually a comment letter. So if you picked up a brochure, there's actually a place where you can handwrite down any comments you have. We have pens, if you need a pen. There's a box right back there up against the wall, that if you just want to write it out, and you don't feel like coming up here and talking to us or saying anything, just write it out, put it in there. At the sign-in sheet, there is a QR code for all the people, for you just go up there, scan your QR code. That will take you to our webpage, and there you can leave a web, you can leave a comment. When we show up here, there's, again, these are the main three ones that we typically go through. You can email us, and the webpage, the email address is meetings@vdot.virginia.gov. You can mail us, the, what they call the slow mail or snail mail, through to Jenny at our VDOT office. Or you can go to, again, the project website, which the QR code will take you to, and that's the Innovative Intersection Design. So again, I'd like to thank you all, and if anybody has any questions, feel free to come up here. I'll put the mic down, and we're here to answer any of your all's questions.
Do I have to give my particulars?
First name and where you're from is just fine.
Sarah, here.
Cool.
First of all, thanks for the presentation, and I would like to know, are there any businesses that are going to be taken?
I can address that one.
Along this corridor, or even further up, like, Cleveland, up to Fairfax?
No. At this point, on this phase, there's no businesses being taken. Early on, there might have been, but with some of the redesign, and that's the reason why you see the design waiver was applied, to pull the sidewalk up to the curb and gut, the curb and gutter of this thing, so that way we can go around a business and save like that. So that's really, so it's not to take any businesses. So no businesses are being planned to be taken. There's going to be a little bit some right-of-way, but again, that's the reason why we kept most of the improvements within the existing footprint of Route 28.
Of note is, we will have, you know, as proposed on there, there are some partial issues, like, for example, there's the car dealership parking lot over at Lindsay. That's one where, yeah, like, they're going to have to be compensated for losing part of the parking lot. of the parking lot. They're not going to lose their building, but that's part of it. Number two, over at Emmanuel Baptist, you know, one of the proposals on that, you know, showed where the sidewalk was going in on the southbound side of 28. We're going to have to work with them figuring out, you know, the compensation for that, and especially because you got the electric sign that you were telling, talking to me about. Whatever's going to, you know, come out about that, I want to make sure that you guys are whole. And so if you are anyone from any business or anyone who has property on this, please make sure you stay in touch with VDOT as much as you can throughout the process, and keep me in the loop, too. I've got a good working relationship with everyone. My job before working, my relationship with them, is representing you. And so that's, that, that is my bias, and that's what we're here to do.
Yeah, mine's, my name's Andrew Smith, and I'm from Manassas City. I did have a question. So you, you mentioned that some of the lanes are going to get like a foot smaller in width, and I noticed that the medians sometimes are going to be like three to four feet, and then you're also talking about buffer on the sidewalks. So I'm curious, is like, if you're taking away some of that width in the lanes and then adding buffer in some of those other spots, is that because of the primary design around safety? Is that like, and then a lot of those buffers are meant for that, or like?
There, there's two, there's different things going on right there. The main purpose is we're trying to keep within the footprint of 28. So we had to try to squeeze in a little bit of lane. So squeeze in there and try to squeeze a median in, you know, you're, right now, there's no median, you have the things. But when you're trying to squeeze a left turn lane, you have to pick up about three feet. So the only way to do that would be to the 12, the 12-foot lanes, 12- to 13-foot lanes, you'd cut them down a little bit, 11-foot. You know, again, the side effect of that is actually, people won't say, but perception, when you get a little bit tighter, people naturally goes a little bit slower. So as part of this, we're hoping that, you know, part of the safety aspects of it, is you narrow it down, people feel a little bit more narrow, they're going to sit down there and think about, okay, I can't do 70 down this road, I'll be doing 30. You know, that's, that's, again, perception, and a lot of things is about perception. So that's really what it is. And so it's really to get the three or four-foot median in there. The buffer is for the sidewalk. It's strictly trying to, typically what you'd like to do, you'd like to have a four-foot buffer, so as you're walking, you know, you have some room to get there, and cars going by, you, you like to have that little safety spot. So that's what the buffer is, is trying to get that nice feeling, so when you're walking down 28, you're not having an 18-wheeler fly by all the time and push you off. Again, that's ideally, again, in some places, because of the businesses and some things that, we have to push that in and jog it out. So, but that, that's kind of the buffering and the lane narrowing.
Okay.
And to be clear, there is no speeding in the morning, that's impossible. And southbound in the afternoon, see the previous comment. But, I mean, like, if you're trying to, you know, like, win a Fast and Furious Award at 1:00 in the morning, I mean, like, we don't want you to do that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for the presentation. My name's Michael Coglan. I'm here on behalf of Lindsay, the owner of a couple dealerships that are impacted, and the bump out or loom is on one of the properties. And the question is, is it still being, is the size of that still being evaluated? There were some notes, I think, from the earlier meeting in May of last year that indicated that it was up for consideration whether it needed to accommodate large trucks. So if you could please kind of bring us up to speed on the status.
I will probably give you the wrong answer, so I'm going to reach over here to Kevin. He's a transport, he's our consultant.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, what is shown now is to accommodate a WB62, which is about the largest tractor trailer that would be permitted on this roadway. I think, so it is a worst-case scenario. I mean, as the design progresses, there's a possibility that it could be refined, but I think if it moves forward, and that's the, the design vehicle that's going to be accommodated, I wouldn't anticipate that it would change significantly.
Okay.
Good evening, and thank you for the project. I am the owner of the property on a corner of Corey Lane, Blooms Corey Lane and 28. There is a existing stormwater management pond there, and I'm wondering if that going to affect, the process going to affect that stormwater management?
Located right here?
Yes.
We are not proposing to impact the stormwater man, the existing stormwater management facility that's located there.
Okay, but you're taking almost five feet of that right-of-way or?
Correct. There is a right-of-way impact, but we, we are staying off of the stormwater management facility. And we can take a, we have the design plans here that would show it. So after, afterwards, we can take a closer look at that.
Sure. And the second question I had, that is a very dangerous intersection. For last 24 years, I have seen a lot of accidents. Is there possibility of putting a traffic light in there?
So that intersection would not warrant a traffic signal, both from the, the traffic volumes that use the intersection as well as the spacing. So it's, you know, it's immediately adjacent to others, to, to other signalized intersection. So it, it would not meet the warrants for a traffic signal.
So question is no?
No, that's correct. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes.
Hi. Hi, does this work?
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you, guys. Thanks, thanks for coming out, VDOT officials, and thank you for your, your hard work and effort on the project. So I'm Tim Mine, the Senior Pastor Emmanuel. If you looked at slide, point three, slide 14, I think you could see our building there. Our property has about eight or nine acres on both sides of Spruce. My guess is we're either the most impacted, or the second-most impacted property by this, by, by this project. There will be a lot of effects on us, right? We, we will have people who live in our neighborhood who won't be able to make a left.
Just for the public identification of this project.
And then we'll also have congregants coming from other places that won't be able to make a left into our property anymore. You'll be doing utility work from what I heard. Our community's about 1,000 people, and we have a Spanish congregation, Arabic congregation, speaking, a Chinese-speaking congregation, and a Korean-speaking congregation. In addition to this, all of these people are going to be inconvenienced by this, right? So I think it looks like a great project. I'm not against it. But, but you guys are really going to have to, I hope, work with us. I mean, we get, we get, the communications we get from VDOT are usually, well, we're going to be doing this, we're going to be doing that. We get requests to park heavy equipment on our machinery, heavy equipment machinery on the property regularly, including over the years by VDOT. We're happy to work with you guys parking things, but not heavy machinery, because it, it, it's, it's hard on the parking lot, and, you know, we don't want, we don't want those expenses. Senator Rome already earlier committed to me to work on the compensation part, so that's an, you know, we're part of acquisition, I guess, on slide 316. So, so the thing is that who is the person who, who we could, or I could liaison with if we have issues with what VDOT's doing on the property?
Okay, so you have a bunch of questions in there, so I'm going to try to answer a couple, I'm going to try to answer a couple of them first. With this project alone, the phase two, I haven't seen the phase two design of innovative intersections, but for this project itself, we're not really going to impact the left turn in or left turn out off across from Spruce Street. That's not being impacted with this project. So I don't think-
So you think people can still make a left onto 28?
As, yes, with this project. Phase two may do something different. I don't, I haven't seen those plans. I don't know anything about that yet. Those are still conceptually designed, so I don't, I can't answer that question. And so, again, we're not here to dissect that. You may, somebody else may be able to answer if you want to hunt, like Prince William County down after this, but for right now, that's not it. So right now, you're, the access to Spruce Street into yours is not going to change. The impacts to your property is we're looking at doing a sidewalk take along the frontage, and to put a sidewalk from Spruce Street down across the front of your property. So that's, that's the impact of yours.
We've got about 40 parking spaces.
Yes. And so what happens is, as this moves into a design-build, we have a, it was going, this is a preliminary design, it's called design public hearing, but it's really a preliminary design. And if you go back, then it's going to move in April into a design-build aspect, and then they're going to nail down a little bit more of the details and refine the design out there, and look at things, and look at the impacts a little bit deeper and a little bit more closer to see what they can do. And they will be, at that point, reach out and contact you, you know, we'll have somebody that will, you know, it's, we're not going to go into a vacuum and come out and say, here, do this.
Well, I think there's going to be a lot of work that's done right around us ongoing. I think VDOT's going to want to park vehicles on our property that happened, that's happened before, I'm sure it's going to happen again. And, and, you know, and that's okay, we, but, you know, we like to discuss it and these kinds of things.
Sure, sure. And I'm Dick Burke. I've been around a while. So projects, this will be a design-build project, and our design-build team are here. Usually, that, once it's awarded, there's some design process, and then it comes back to the public to show what the final design is. But usually, there's a partner-dust meeting, Mark, is that what it is? So there's a partner-dust meeting, and at that meeting, you'll meet the contractors, VDOT, you'll have points of contacts, names, numbers, you know, if something goes bad on a Saturday afternoon, when nobody's around, you'll have contact information.
Just to add in to that, my chief of staff, Jesse, who's in the back, if you want to stand, raise your hand. So anytime, if, if for any reason you're having difficulty, like getting ahold of someone at VDOT, whatever, please feel free to reach out to me. I'll make sure you have my personal cell number, and I'll make sure that you've got our office number, and we will liaison for you as much as possible, while at the same time, making sure that you're getting the one-on-one connection that you need with whoever's on the project that's got to take the lead on it.
And the last question is, and, you know, you, you all do not anticipate that this will affect our operations in any way. In other words, while you're doing utilities or something, there's not a chance that we'd have to shut the church down or something like that?
No, they would have to maintain access for you while they're doing construction. Their contractor would have to work with you, but they have to maintain access.
Okay.
And the only, another thing I'd point out, because I think you, you touched on it a little bit, so the, where the sidewalk is, in general, we're, we're trying to put it between the back of curb and your parking lot, but you see where it does bump out a little bit, that's because of the, the large transmission line.
Yeah, right.
And that's probably a worst case. We're still working through refining that design and trying to figure out how close we can be to the transmission pole without having to relocate it. But there, there, there will likely be some minor impacts to your parking spaces, but not all 40 across the front there.
Okay, all right, good. Yeah, that, that right corner is what concerns them the most.
Right, right. Yeah, and that's where that pole is located.
That's also where the sign is, right?
That's where our sign, yeah, our electronic sign. Okay, well, thank you very much. Thank you, Senator Rome. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Bessie Carter, and I own the lot on Burt Street and 28. See, there were its proposed, the watershed. I would like to know if VDOT is interested in taking the whole lot, because it is a small lot, just taking, just enough to satisfy the basin.
Do you want to take it, or you want me to? At this point, the intention would be take, again, this is like Kevin said earlier, these are worst-case design options. So ideally, if they move through it, they may be able to refine it a little bit and pull it in a little bit, but the intention would be not to do any full takes of any properties out there.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Mike Smith, Manassas Park resident.
I can just take the mic?
Just, just a couple real easy questions for you guys here. Again, on the proposed stormwater basin, is that, are those, is that going to be fenced off for safety? And assuming so, who's going to be responsible for the maintenance or maintaining that so that it doesn't, for example, fill up with trash?
Yeah, so that, it would likely be fenced off, and then if there is a basin there, it would be maintained by VDOT.
That was an easy one. Yeah.
Just looking after the trash.
Sure.
My name's Chris Griffin, Coles District, Prince William County. I had two questions. One of the questions was the budgeting that is for this, is this from when, and where does the funding come, should it go past the anticipated amount? The second question that I heard, that I've not heard before, is the ADA, the walkways. I do understand that the driveways will be ADA compliant, but you had said that some of them will not be. Why not? How many of those? And what would it take to get that fixed? Because that's probably going to be a concern for those that do have disabilities for access.
All right, I'll, I'll answer the money question, then I'll pitch it over to y'all for the design question. Okay, so the money source on this, it came from three different sources, and the way that they do it is they budget several years out. So basically, just for example, this is not exactly like how it worked or whatever, you might have, you know, okay, we're going to do things for the upcoming fiscal year, and then the following fiscal year, and then after that, after that, right? And so a lot of the funding that we were securing for this fell into this 2027, 2028 timeframe. And in doing so, they did calculate cost escalation to go within that. So basically, like, you know, is it going to be more expensive for, you know, labor for anything else between now and then? And we secured three different pots of money for this. There are two primary pots of money. The RSTP funds that I mentioned before, that's doing the paperwork stuff to kind of get the design engineering ideas underway for the corridor. The main pots of money for this, as was mentioned before, number one is the Virginia Highway Safety Improvement Program. So this is a state, this is a statewide thing, and yours truly threw an absolute fit until we got this, and we got through Virginia Highway Safety Improvement Program, in part because I had actually put in legislation that would have dedicated 10% of general fund surplus dollars to VHSE specifically for the purpose of making sure we had more money to do stuff like this. Well, I put in a bill like that three times in a row, so I got their attention pretty well, and, well, we got our money. The next part on this, the MVTA part, that was awarded as part of the last round that they were doing on their six-year plan. And so, pretty much, even though the 62.5 million, that's spread out throughout the corridor, what you saw here, which slide, which slide had the money numbers on it, the cost?
Seventeen.
Seventeen, okay. What you'll see here is this particular project comes in at, like, what is it, 27 million and change?
Twenty-seven point seven, I think.
Okay. So we have the money to take care of this, like, that's without question. And we just need to make sure that we are also, number one, getting everything done as efficiently as possible, so that we're not wasting any money, we don't have any, you know, other problems. And then number two, the remaining money of that, that's going to go into the next phase. That's basically between where this project ends and up to Orchard Bridge. And then separately beyond that, we, we also want to do state-of-good repair funds to actually deal with the bridge itself that connects over the Bull Run to go into, into Centerville. That'll make it a little bit more pedestrian-friendly when we have that. That's a whole separate thing, but for tonight's presentation, we're just dealing with this part.
Thank you for explaining that and reiterating.
Yeah, now, the ADA stuff, I'll pitch it over to the VDOT.
Well, I was going to also jump in on that. There's also a contingency. So as you build in, there's probably like a 20% to 30%, you know, because, is, we escalate it, you take an escalation, and then you throw in contingency on top of it. So that's how we try to mimic the best, make sure that all the money is there. I think Kevin's going to answer the ADA issue.
Yeah, so the ADA, and I should have clarified this earlier. So when you look at the project corridor, and we see-
Please hold the microphone.
Oh, yes, sorry, thank you. When you see the, the orange and then the pink for the driveways, so those are being upgraded to meet current, current standards for ADA. The one that I was referencing where we are not is the driveway located right here towards the southern end of the project. So there is sidewalk, and there's ADA ramps, but based on the grade, the slope of that existing driveway, it was going to be difficult to, to upgrade it to meet the 2% cross slope, that's the requirement for the crossing that driveway, without really may, having significant impacts on their, on their parking lot, and, and maybe even encroaching on the building there.
So it's just one, so where do the people that need the ADA compliance go once they get to that point of the, the overall spec of this at $30 million? We can't fix that?
So they would continue to, they would continue to cross the way they're doing now at that location?
On an un-ADA compliant area?
Does not meet current ADA compliance.
Okay, and it cannot get up to it?
Excuse me?
And you, it cannot get up to ADA compliance?
It's, I mean, it's something that we could look at closer to see, but our initial assessment was that just based on the impacts to that property, it was going to be challenging to upgrade it to meet current ADA regulations.
I definitely would encourage that for those that may need it. Thank you.
Sure, that's a good comment. Thank you.
And just for a little bit of context, the last time this part of Route 28 had a mid, a major change to it was about 40 years ago, when they actually did the widening, you know, so that actually got out to the five lanes in the first place. And so the way that we deal, we, and we even look at ADA compliance now, in terms of how we're doing this, we're talking about- we're doing this, we're talking about a significant upgrade to most of the quarter, because most of the quarter right now frankly falls somewhere between not compliant or we're not, we got lucky. It's somewhere in between the two, because we were dealing with mid-1980s standards for this versus being in 2025.
Hi, thanks. Me again. Now we know that there's usually a lot of trucks and things doing utilities. I would hope that you would be looking at having the utilities, trucks and whatnot out in hours when people are not out, like, somewhere in the non-rush hour, or sometime in the, the middle of the night when people are not, not going to be impacted so hard? I would make this suggestion.
Yeah, that's a good, good comment. Construction impacts to the existing roadway as far as maintenance of traffic will be limited to the non-daytime peak hours and then night hours for, for lane closures.
And weekends.
And weekends, yes.
And weekends.
Correct. I think you have pressed in for that for the project that you just did over in Centerville. Would anyone else like to comment?
All right, if nobody has any comments, again, remember, you still have four, a bunch of ways you can reach out if you, if something, if something pops up the next 10 days, like Jenny says, by March 10th, if something pops up, let us know. Again, there's the QR code that takes us to Route 28 Innovative Intersection main page, there's the emailing us, there's the snail mail, as long as it's post-dated by March 10th, it was fine. You can even write it down here and leave it there. So since there's no other questions, thank you all for coming. It's been a great, I'm glad, I'm excited about the turnout. Again, we have people, all the other VDOT people, civil rights is outside, our bike pet are outside, right-of-way folks are outside, environmental folks are outside. So if you have any specific questions about those, feel free to go talk to them. Thank you, guys. And gals.